Okay, welcome to City Hall. Before we start tonight's meeting, first we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Larry Henry. Then I would like Paul Gash and Phil McKee to lead us in the prayer, or in the pledge.
May we bow our heads, please? Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for getting us here safe and sound this evening. And in that same vein, we just ask that you continue to bless and watch over our families and our community. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to do with it what is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, we'd like to, no scouts tonight, I see a lot of uniforms but no scouts. Like to welcome all the kids at home that are watching since they're out of school now. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Bray?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Lubert?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner? Weber?
Here.
Alright, thank you, we have a courtroom this evening. Welcome again. We'll start off with number six, public hearings, and Janice McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is regarding rezoning 2827 South Ten Mile Drive, rezoning that from RS1 to C1. This property is located on South Ten Mile Drive, west of Stone Ridge Parkway. Contains about a third of an acre. This matter went to the Planning and Zoning Commission in their meeting in April, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended it be approved. The applicant owns this property and also the property next door that shows the C1 zoning. The intent is to combine the property and use it for commercial purposes. This rezoning does comply with the South Ten Mile Drive Neighborhood Plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll have a third reading of 2012-15.
Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .34 acres from RS1 Low Density Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for land addressed as 2827 South Ten Mile Drive, described as part of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Okay, staff, any more to report on that?
Uh, no, Mayor.
As this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for this bill? Anyone here to speak against? Council debate. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Yes, aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes, moving on, Janice McMillan, 2012-16.
Thank you, Mayor. This next matter is rezoning from RA2 Multi-Family Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development. This property is located in the 300 block of Hoover Road. You may be familiar with this property as the prior Cherry Creek Development. The southern eight and a half acres is the subject of this rezoning request, and that's in this area right here. The original proposal was for 300, over 300 dwelling units, 148 of which would have been on this eight and a half acres. The new proposal is to construct duplexes and triplexes on this land for a maximum of 62 units. The Fire Department and Public Works Department participated in the review of this development plan and found that it met all of the city's requirements. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application in April and also recommended it for approval. There's an associated PUD plan, that's the, the rezoning is Bill 16 and the PUD plan is Bill 17. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 8.5 acres of land located in the 300 block of Hoover Road from RA2 High Density Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development, described as part of Lot 5 of Cherry Creek, Section 1, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Anything to add, Janice?
No.
Since this is a public hearing, anyone here to speak in favor of 2012-16? Mr. Bates, please limit your remarks to five minutes.
Mayor Mike Bates, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street, and I'll be very brief. Number one, I'm here to answer questions. Number two, to let you know that the development group represented by Jim Jordan, Double Vision, is here tonight. We think it's a great plan, it's a great following to something that wasn't successful before, and speaking for 16 and 17, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Bates? Alright, thank you, Mike, for being here. Anyone else here to speak for this development? Okay, at this point in time, anyone to speak against? Seeing none, is there anyone here, I'm sorry, discussion from the council? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes, Janice, now 2012-17.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the PUD plan for the property that was a subject of the previous rezoning bill. As I mentioned, the proposal is to construct a series of duplexes and triplexes on this eight and a half acres for a maximum of 62 units.
Okay, any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a preliminary PUD plan for property located in the 300 block of Hoover Road, described as part of Lot 5 of Cherry Creek, Section 1, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Okay, Janice, anything to add?
No, Mayor.
Okay, anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Any discussion from council members? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes, now we'll move on to number seven. The following minutes, reports have been filed here at City Hall, Animal Control Section Monthly Report, our Board of Electrical Examiners Review, Stormwater Quality Advisory Committee, Finance Reports for March of 2012, Campo Technical Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, and the Cultural Arts Commission. If you would like to serve on one of our boards, by all means, contact Gail Strope, or you can go on our website also. Next, we'll have council committee reports, and first will be Administration Committee chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. The Administration Committee met May 9th. We discussed intergovernmental public relations, and we talked about having the county come back to do their quarterly or so reports at the podium where they could update the council on what's going on with the county. We had appointments reviewed, and at our next meeting, we will discuss the CVB contract. And our next meeting is Wednesday, June 6th at 8:00 AM. Thank you.
Alright, moving on, our Finance Committee is chaired by Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report on the sales tax revenue numbers for the month of May. The general fund sales tax for May was down $103,633 year-to-date. We are ahead of projections, and that total is $195,676. The Finance Committee will meet tomorrow at 7:30 AM across the hall.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving on, Public Safety is chaired by Councilman Dr. Brian Pope. Doctor?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety met last Thursday following the General Counsel Meeting to discuss further the fire improvement plan. A great deal of information was presented, and the goal was to make an attempt to present all the information we would need to be able to consider it tonight. That didn't actually happen, and so there is a substitute bill coming out tonight, which actually I am in favor of, and in addition then, some modifications in the plan itself, which will be presented at that time. The next Public Safety meeting will be June the 14th, following our General Counsel pre-meeting.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Pope. Moving on, Public Works and Planning, Bob Scrivner couldn't be here tonight, and Bob Weber is the co-chair, and he's filling in. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been no Public Works Committee meeting since our last council meeting. The next meeting is this Thursday at 7:30 across the hall.
Alright, thank you, Bob. Moving on, we do have a liaison report tonight from Sean Schulte, who chairs our Airport Advisory Board. Sean?
Thanks, Mayor. I would just like to pass on information, you know, on the economic impact that the airport has on the city. Year-to-date operations numbers at the airport, Jefferson City Airport had 9,911 operations, and for comparison, Columbia had, during that same time period, Columbia had 8,350. So, that's a difference of 1,561 operations, more than a Columbia year-to-date. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Sean. No appointments by the mayor tonight. Moving on to presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, we have Steve Eyley, former councilman, and President of the Historic City of Jefferson. Steve, welcome tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I am Steve Eyley, President of HCJ. HCJ is an organization that's been in existence now for 29 years in Jefferson City. We're dedicated to historic preservation. That's a keen interest of ours, and particularly using historic preservation as an economic development tool. And we're very pleased at the things that we've been seeing in the last several years, particularly that the city has been involved with, that really put historic preservation in an important place in terms of the development of our community. In particular, the Old Town Redevelopment Corporation, we think that's been a very positive thing, and glad to see the focus on revitalizing the city center. Very important. There are other things that the city is doing that we think are just wonderful, the landmark awards that are, the city gives out every year, and by the way, this year, they will be given out this Thursday at 4 o'clock right here in the City Council chambers. Understand the mayor will be present to give out those awards. In addition, our organization sponsors an art and essay contest for schoolkids here in Jefferson City, and awards will be given out also Thursday at the Landmark Award Ceremony, where we honor the students who have done some artwork about historic buildings or essays about the history of our community. And so we hope that you all be able to be here and help honor the landmark winners and, of course, the schoolchildren who participated in our program. What I'm here for tonight, though, really, is to provide some input into another project that's been going on, a joint effort between the city's Historic Preservation Commission, of course, the council is part of that, the State Historic Preservation Office, and our group, the Historic City of Jefferson. As you know, there's an effort underway to apply to the National Register of Historic Places to put the Morrel Heights area, to designate it as a historic district. And we very much support that effort. We think that's a great partnership that's developing between the three entities that I mentioned. And in case you're not familiar, the Morrel Heights area, which would be a historic district if this all goes through, covers 275, 74 houses, two parks, and includes Morrel Drive, Fairmount Boulevard, El Marine, Vineyard Square, and other areas within that designated space. So, it's definitely a historic community, a historic part of our city, and we're really pleased that we're moving forward with an application to the National Register, which is where that district belongs. So, while many groups come before the City Council, asking for an appropriation or two, I remember that from when I was on the City Council, we'd like to do our part to help further this effort. And so the Historic City of Jefferson is going to be a contributing partner. We are providing $1,000 to help with the application process, which is, there is some expense to it, and I know the city, through your appropriations and the work of the Historic Preservation Commission, are helping in that effort too. So that's why I'm here tonight, to present a check to the city for that. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for moving forward with this National Register application. So Mayor, I'm gonna give you a check.
It's not every day this happens, right here, in front of everybody. Steve, thanks for all the work that your group does for our community. It's very well needed. You know, Old Town's obviously got a lot of news here recently. I want to thank Steve personally for his help and dedication to our city. Steve, thank you very much. And Steve Schleter, make sure I give you this check, otherwise Darrell and the girls might find it at home. Next, we have, we don't have Bee after all, we have some other people that are gonna speak about that later. Next, I have talking about the Mayor's Golf Tournament, Mr. Brian Coulter, and a former councilman, now with the Red Cross, Mr. Dave Griffith. Welcome back, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, and then City Councilman, and thank you for giving us the time. A few years ago, I belonged to the Quanis Club, and former Mayor John Landwehr was also a member of the Quanis Club, and in order to try and raise some money for our local Quanis Club, he began the Mayor's Club, Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. And for those of you that know Mayor Landwehr, he is not eligible for the PGA Tour in any way, shape, or form, but he is a big supporter of the, of our Quanis Club. We had some concern when he had, when he stepped down from being mayor as to how that was going to continue. But Mayor Strumpf was very kind to offer to continue this. For those of you that don't know, the Quanis Club is an international organization. Its mission statement is dedicated to serving the children of the world, one child and one community at a time. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club International about four years ago. A portion of every fundraiser that we have goes to the Boys and Girls Club locally. This golf tournament is going to be held on the day before Father's Day, on Saturday. It's always been held in July or August during the hottest day of the entire year. So in an effort to try and salute fathers, and also to try and have a little cooler weather, it's going to be held on Saturday. It's a three-person scramble at Oak Hills. It's $240 per team. Brian is the chairman of this year's event, and I'll let him talk and tell how many people that we have so far.
Alright, thanks Eric for letting us come tonight, and...
Brian, thank you for all you're doing, appreciate it.
We, so far, we have 20 teams signed up, so we have about 16 spots left. Hopefully in the next month, we can fill those up. Again, thanks for allowing us to come. I really appreciate all the, all the work that Jason does at the golf course to get everything ready and prepared for our tournament that day.
Thanks, that's all we've got. And I want to invite all of you to come out, and if you can't come out, you can make a donation, we'd like that too, so.
Dave and Brian, thank you for coming. It's a great thing that Mayor Landwehr started, glad to continue the deal. Luckily, though, I can outscore Landwehr in golf, it's not that big a hill climb.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, thank you. And I know he'll appreciate that in the morning, reading that in the paper. Okay, moving on to number 11, announcements by council and staff. I know Carrie Carroll had an announcement about, I think, an event or a project going on downtown.
Sure. Downtown recently received six recycle containers. They're placed near the trash cans for plastic bottles and aluminum cans. It's the first place in the city that has public receptacles for recycling in a shopping area, and we're very thankful to the city, especially Lauren Hershey, for helping us to receive the grant for those containers, and we're hoping that other shopping areas and districts in town will follow and be interested in doing the same thing. So be sure when you're in the downtown area to look for one of those recycling containers. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Carrie. Moving on, May Work Session, Nathan Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Work Session will be held next Monday night at 5:30, and we will have two topics to discuss. We'll be going over the results of the recent town halls and sort of the analysis we have of the comments that we received, and then that, I think, will blend fairly seamlessly into our second topic, which is reviewing the history and the current status of the Conference Center project.
Okay, Nathan, thank you. Moving on, Jason Turner, sir, talk to us about Summer Fire School. Jason?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll speak to that.
Oh, go ahead, chief.
Um, as you know, for the last 15 or so years, the Summer Fire School, the University of Missouri Fire Training Institute, comes to Jeff City and conducts a week-long training program for firefighters throughout the state. This year, the date is June 5 through 10. We intend to use the recently acquired buildings on Mulberry Street to do some interior structural work. We'll have classes on Lincoln Campus, and we'll be utilizing our training facility at Hyde Park.
Alright, thank you, chief. Moving on, Animal Shelter Open House. To speak for Roger tonight is Captain Bob Senova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The work on the new animal shelter is coming along very well. We're on schedule for a open house on June 3rd. That'll be from 10 to 4 at Hyde Park. There'll also be a 5K run walk to go along with that, and we invite everybody to come out and take a look at the new building. We don't want to stress the animals out, there won't be any animals on site. It'll just be to look at the building, a thousand people coming by and not petting them, not gonna be good for them, so.
When do they move in, Captain, roughly?
Probably about two weeks after the open house.
Okay. But all in all, things, construction-wise, things are where they should be as far as fundraising? Maybe, I don't know if Steve Schleter can answer this, is that all where it should be also? I know they were, I know they had some pavers they were trying to sell, I'm sure they're still trying to sell those or some more of them.
Yes, there are several fundraising events going on, but yes, the, the money has been sufficiently appropriated to complete the construction of the facility.
Okay. And also, we can't forget our counties in this, Cole County, the Cole County Commission put up $300,000?
They put up $300,000, yes, sir.
We appreciate them partnering up on that. Okay, next, we have number 12, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes per state, or excuse me, per city code. And first to have on the agenda is Scott Spencer. Give us your name and your address and why you're here tonight. Scott, welcome.
Mayor and fellow council members, my name is Scott Spencer, and I live at 1140 Boonville Road here in Jefferson City. Tonight, I speak to you on behalf of the Fire Department Improvement Plan Committee. I also represent tonight my fellow firefighters. The City Council and the Fire Department have a long history in making our community safe. October 7th, 1912, City Ordinance 1809 created a career fire department that is staffed 24 hours, 7 days a week. April 5th, 1966, voters approved a $700,000 bond issue for new equipment and three new fire stations. All three of those fire stations are in operation today. March 4th, 1997, the EMS First Responder Program was instituted. These are few, are, these are just a few of important highlights of the partnership that the council and the Fire Department has had to improve the quality of life for our community. Tonight, we hope that that partnership is continued. We understand the difficulty of tonight's decision. There is never a perfect time for a tax proposal. Unfortunately, our Fire Department operating budget can't wait for better economic times. You see 20-year-old air packs fail, 20-year-old fire hose fails, holes in structural firefighting gear is unsafe. A depleted training budget diminishes the state of readiness of a fire department. These are just a few key components that your firefighters rely on every day to help them stay safer and be able to reach those that are in need. The Jefferson City Fire Department was borne out of necessity with the burning and destruction to the Capitol February 5th, 1911, and with the transition from horse-drawn hose wagons to motorized fire engines, the fire service continues to evolve. Today, we are challenged to do more, faster, safer, and more effectively, and we accept that challenge. We need to usher in the next 100 years with the improved services such as advanced life support medical services to complement the ambulance service. This is a natural step forward to improve our emergency medical services we already provide to our community, and it will save even more lives. With implementation of fire prevention and education programs, new training techniques, safety equipment, communication and technology upgrades, we will be able to respond faster and provide safer, more efficient, and cost-effective emergency services that our community needs. We hope, we are praying, and we are pleading for you to vote yes on tonight's bill. We just want the citizens to have the opportunity for their voices to be heard. Thank you.
Scott, thanks for coming tonight. Next, we have on the agenda, I'm seeing, oh, I'm sorry, any questions of Mr. Spencer? Questions, not comments.
Scott, could you tell, tell me a little more, a little bit more about the outdated equipment you have?
Um, the air packs are beyond, Fire Chief could probably speak better than I can on, on those issues, but the air packs are, are well beyond their service life. They're heavy, there's better technology out there that we could utilize to, to get to our potential victims in hazardous situations faster and easier on our, our bodies. You know, we, we do not have extra personnel. At all the structure fires that I've had for my 18 years of being here, when I run out of air in my air pack, I go out and get another air pack. We don't have another crew coming in to relieve us. We go back in and fight that fire. So I would like to have better technology for me to utilize to work, not necessarily harder, but smarter. And obviously, we have a big burden with our EMS, 60% of our call volume is EMS-related. We need new EMS equipment, we'd like to be better trained in that field. That's 60% of our business. So, that's kind of where we're at today.
Follow-up there? Go ahead, Ralph.
Would it be appropriate for me to address the chief then? And, and talk about the outdated equipment and the need for it, and how is it, or why is it the Fire Department firefighters have such outdated equipment that needs replaced?
Just as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, that probably would be better served on the actual bill itself, since this is a presentation from the gallery.
I would see that. Any other question, Ralph, at this time?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Seeing none, questions to my right? Scott, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next, I see here, we have Tisha Spencer. I'm assuming those last names are same for a reason. Good to see you again, Tisha, thanks for being here tonight.
My name is Tisha Spencer, and I'm, live at 1140 Boonville Road here in Jefferson City, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you all tonight. My husband is Captain Scott Spencer, you guessed correctly, and I agreed to speak tonight because I want to represent a different perspective. I wanted to speak on behalf of the wives and the children, the families of these firefighters, of the Jefferson City Fire Department, of several of which are here tonight. These men and women do this job for one reason, they're passionate about serving the people of this community. Excuse me. The job is not an easy one. There are mini Christmases, and 4th of Julys, and school plays, and ballgames, and countless bedtimes missed. The job is physically demanding, and it wears on their bodies, and they're worn out long before their due. My husband had hip and knee surgery in the same year at age 38. It's also a very emotionally demanding job. They face crisis situations every day on duty, sometimes multiple times a day. Their workdays include stress-like resuscitating an elderly man as his wife breaks down beside him, cutting a friend's teenage son out of a mangled car, and coaxing a scared child out of a smoke-filled room, and comforting a single mom who just lost everything. And in the past 18 years, I've told my husband many, many times, I don't know how you do this job, and you come home and you leave, lead a normal life. Sometimes I'm so stressed out by my desk job that I, that I lay awake at night, and I can't imagine doing what they do and being able to sleep. I finally learned that over the years, the reason that Scott can handle the stress of this job is because he knows he's done the best he can do to help people at their greatest time of need. So, I would ask of you that you would consider the vote in favor of this bill, that these firefighters can continue to do the best that they can do. As a small... business owner, I certainly understand the concern over another sales tax, but I believe this small increase serves a very critical purpose here in Jefferson City, and I would welcome the relief to our own personal property tax. I wish it weren't so, but tomorrow will come, and the next shift will take over, and the tragedies will happen. And the Jeff City Fire Department is in need of equipment and training that will likely be used on all of our friends and our family members, and possibly even to save the lives of one of these kids that are back here tonight. I encourage you to do the very best that you can do to help these men and women save lives in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next I have on, I'm sorry, questions of Tisha? All right, Tisha, thank you. Next, I have Gary Day on our list. Welcome, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Gary Day. I live at 1434 Engelnook Drive in Jefferson City, Missouri, or behind Cedar Hill School. I've come here this evening to agree to speak on behalf of a little bit different approach, and that is a citizen, basically remembering back to 9/11. I remember how our community began to change a little bit, and how we are the seat here to many things that I look forward to, at least someday to a convention center, a new hospital. We've just recently had a new prison improvement right up the street. We've had new residents, the possibility of that on 179. We house federal buildings, state buildings, we house a rail service, and we house some of the largest employers, i.e. the state, where you would have a situation and the possibility that we may not be able to service those, and be thankful that we did not have a Joplin situation that occurred, I believe, about a year ago with the state. So what I'm here for this evening is to ask for your consideration for at least it to be brought to the community. I know there's going to be people out there who will not be in favor of it, and there'll be people who will be in favor of it. I'm asking you to at least give us the chance, as you have on many occasions, brought forward to the community, for our vote to determine whether or not we're going to move forward, or we're going to remain the same and remain in neutrality. So for this, I thank you for your time, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Gary, good seeing you again. Thank you very much. Any questions, Gary? Okay, moving on, I have Charles Gaskin next. Charles, do you want the microphone brought to you? All righty. Charles, thanks for coming tonight. Good seeing you again, guy.
My name is Charles Gaskin, 2604 Twin Hills Road, Third Ward, Second Precinct. I attended two of the three recent town hall meetings, and my conclusions, those with ties to the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce favored the four projects that were under discussion. Some of those not associated with the chamber selected one project of the four as favored, but there was no consensus. While the majority did not have enough information, others questioned the return on investment, or were basically unfavorable. Under this climate of uncertainty, I urge you to delay further efforts on these four projects and give serious considerations to five projects that I believe deserve immediate attention in this priority order. First, the needs of a fire department. The citizens of Jefferson City deserve to have the finest fire department in the nation. Other than being on the city council, they have the most dangerous job in the area. They risk their lives to save us and our property. Second, our law enforcement deserves equal treatment. At the risk of their lives, they protect us from harm, keeping the bad among us away from the good. Each of these agencies knows what they need, far better than any of us, and to keep us safe and secure. How would you like it if with your home on fire, that the water hose suddenly bursts open and your possessions disappear? Or the firefighter's air pack fails and he can't reach a child needing rescue? Or there is not enough radios to communicate with each other, so if he falls through a hole in the floor, rescue can happen quickly? How would you like it in the act of being robbed, that the officer's gun jams? And don't forget the time that an officer places himself between you and some sort of danger solely to protect you. They need the best equipment available. I think you get my point. Third on my list is to fix all of the stormwater issues. In doing so, the assessed valuation of such properties will increase dramatically. Here, the additional taxes gained do not require an election. Fourth, fix the roads to first-class condition. It is the most visible thing that, that shows you truly care about the citizens of this community and our visitors. Fifth, if you are concerned about your safety here at City Hall, decide what you need now and do it. Don't talk about it for 10 years. The five issues will do more to bring visitors and permanent residents to Jefferson City instead of a conference center. Taking visible pride in Jefferson City is the best advertising you can do to attract people. It's noticeable, and it's, that notice is immediate, and it is impressive. If you, if we expect superior protection and service, they, they need the best equipment and tools to do their jobs safely and quickly. The fire department and law enforcement need your full support. They certainly have mine. Thank you.
Any questions of Charles tonight? Charles, thanks for being here. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, I have Mr. Kurt Williams.
Thank you very much. Mayor, City Council, what I bring to you today is a letter of support that we've received from Mr. Jay Barnes, and I'd like permission to read this to you. City of Jefferson City Council members, I'm writing to you in support of the members of the Jefferson City Fire Department and the tax issue that has been brought before council this evening. It is important to me as an elected official of this district that the citizens of Jefferson City have a voice in the adequate funding of our local fire department via the 1/4 cent sales tax. The brave men and women who help protect our community daily deserve that support as local government officials. This is an important step in achieving that goal, so please vote to send this initiative to the local citizens in August. Respectfully, Jay Barnes, Missouri State Representative, District 114, Western Cole County.
Any questions, Mr. Williams? Kurt, thank you for being here tonight. Okay, next to have on our agenda is Mr. Phil McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Philip McKee. I live at 5524 South Brooks Drive, a subdivision that I hope in the near future will be annexed into this fine city. I'm a firefighter, a driver, and a paramedic with the Jefferson City Fire Department. I'm also the elected representative of all the firefighters that work for the city of Jefferson. And I have to apologize here, like Dr. Pope stated earlier, there's been a lot of maneuvering here in the past 24 hours or the past weekend regarding Bill 2012-6, and because of that, I've had to revise my speech somewhat at the last minute, so if I get off track, I apologize. Last time I was here, last month, before the previous council, before the changeover, I was with other members of the fire department, and there seemed to be a feeling that the fire department improvement tax might not pass at that time. There were some reservations due to the recent failure of the chamber's transformation tax. There were some members then that I spoke with, members of the council who were unsure if their constituents would support any tax at all, even one that might improve their fire department service. I believe that the rejection of that proposal at that time was very specific to those specific projects. That was not an indictment of all taxes in the community. And as Chief Brant said last month at that meeting, our members are prepared, we are still fully prepared, to go out, to walk the streets, to go door-to-door, to do whatever we need to do to show this council that the community has our backs and that they are behind this bill, and want this bill put before them in August. So now, with the expected passage of Bill 2012-6 tonight, our members are still ready to go out, to go door-to-door, to campaign, to make sure the public, our residents that we serve in this community are educated, and are ready to support this bill when they go to the polls in August. I started my career here in 1996, and since that time, I've worked with several, several city councils, and every council that I can recall at some point has voiced that they recognize a need for improvement in public safety, particularly in the fire department, and have pledged support to that. However, the answer has traditionally been, well, we don't have the funding this year. You know, we'll try to get something next year, and that's still the answer we're receiving. We believe this tax, proposed tax initiative will address those needs, take the burden off this in future councils to try to come up with funds where there are none. Just a few additional points, you know, we've been talking about station, the new Station 3 on 179 in the Cherry Creek area. That land was purchased, I believe, back in 2009, and it's been talked about so much, I've run into citizens when we're out on calls, ask about it, and they're, they're under the impression that that station has already been built because it's been talked about so long. They don't realize that the final plans haven't been approved, ground has not been broken there. I've also heard a lot of talk recently in conjunction with the new St. Mary's on 179 about the Station 6 that has been promised out there. There is absolutely no funding, no plan in place at this time to provide that station that's been talked about. Some people have said that, well, you guys have brand-new apparatus. We got this lease program, and that is true. We have some brand-new apparatus. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a new model year. It's come with a bunch of problems we've had, but the really bad part about that is that when that lease expires, either we pay a balloon payment or we give those trucks back. So there is no, currently no funding in place to replace the apparatus at the end of the current lease period. Now presumably, that would fall under a future capital improvements tax should this tax proposal fail, so. In conclusion, I think there's a lot of good aspects. It's been stated, you know, this rollback of the property tax, we think that's a good selling point. I was very reluctant to consider even proposing anything until that idea was brought forth. I think that's a benefit for many property owners. And speaking to the property tax, you know, back when that was initiated back in the 40s, I believe, to pay for the fireman's pension, at that time, all the firefighters did was fight fire. So if you own property, it might catch on fire, the fire department would come. And they were the, the property owners were the only ones to share that burden. But nowadays, we fight fire, we go to medical emergencies, we have water rescue, we have high-angle rescue, we have hazardous materials. There are so many different things that we cover and respond to that affect more than, than just the individuals that own property. So I think that's a reason why the tax burden needs to be spread out a little bit more. And so, again, need to fund upgrades and replacement and placement of future additional stations. It's been talked about, we need additional training and equipment. Right now, we're functioning on about $100 a firefighter per year, which is completely inadequate because of those areas I spoke of. Those are some very specific areas that require very specific targeted training, and without funding, our members will not receive that training. So, again, I know we have some diehard supporters on the council. I certainly appreciate all of you working with us, and I hope that all of you will take us one step forward now in this process and pass Bill 2012-6 tonight. Thank you.
All right, Phil, any questions of Phil tonight? Rick Mahalovich.
Could you clarify your intent with regard to initiative petition?
Well, it's our understanding that because this is a financial consideration, that by law, it cannot be what is generally considered to be an initiative petition, even if half the citizens, voting citizens of the community, sign the petition. Because it is a financial tax issue, that still does not force the hand of the council. So what we were attempting to do is for those who say, you know, I don't think people in my ward will support that, I don't know if this can pass, to get the signatures and say, yes, the people in all the wards do support this, and they are behind it, and so there is no political fallout of supporting this bill.
Sorry. Any questions over here? Okay, Bill, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's everyone under number, under number 12. Did I miss anybody? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. At this point in time, we will entertain a motion to approve A, B, and C. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to bids over $50,000, is there a necessity, council, to break these out or leave them together? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to do A and B together. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Now, move into our bills introduced, 2012-26. Willing in tonight for Roger Schwartz is Brett Smith. Thank you, Brett.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Thank you, Mayor. This bill would authorize the disposal of three vehicles as outlined in your bill summary. I would note that the staff has produced a different bill summary with a slightly different fiscal note for you today. Due to a change in policy, the, from MODOT, the proceeds from the sale of these buses would be returned 100% to MODOT, but they would then in turn, when we purchase our replacement buses, credit us that full amount on that purchase. It's just a simple change in the process to ensure the grant funds are appropriated in the correct way. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Brett? Okay, moving on to 2012-27. Brett's up again.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing an agreement and the expenditure of funds for purchase of property related to the construction of the new Coal Junction pump station in the city of Jefferson, Cole County, Missouri.
Mr. Eric Seaman's here tonight. Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this overall project is to replace a pump station that will allow for growth and to eliminate current wet weather overflows. The site is adjacent to the existing Highway 179 pump station near Coal Junction, and there's a exhibit for you. The pie-shaped piece of property to the north of it is where the existing pump station sits, so this will be adjacent to that. And the compensation for this was based on appraisal.
Okay, any questions of Eric tonight? Mr. Lubert?
How big is the piece of ground?
It's 2.5 acres.
Any other questions? All right, Eric, thanks for being here tonight. Good seeing you again. 2012-28, Drew.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the South Side Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan for the East Dunkland Street Redevelopment Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, the East Dunkland Street Redevelopment Project, which is always, is the South Side TIF. When it was adopted, we had, we had, I'm sorry, we had our proposed costs of the construction, our proposed sales tax revenue. We have now identified those numbers exactly. We have now identified those numbers exactly. The construction is complete, so we can identify the actual costs, and we can adopt the sales tax baseline, and this document would certify those costs and certify the baseline. And I should say, the TIF commission passed on this, or heard this issue last week, I believe, and approved them.
Okay, any questions of Drew on 2012-28? All right, Drew, thanks for that update. Moving on to bills pending, we'll have third reading of 2012-4.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Modern Lithoprint Company in connection with the proposed issuance by the city of Jefferson, Missouri of its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $4 million to finance the costs of such project.
Tell us more is Drew Hilbert. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, I'll just describe five as well, essentially, the 2012 five. This is step three and four of the industrial revenue bonds for Modern Lithoprint. This started by the last council. It approves $4 million of bonded capacity. It purchases a printing press, and what makes this different from other industrial revenue bonds is it helps the local business expand. Usually, we use those to bring in businesses from the outside.
Drew, is this the first time we've done that for a local business?
I believe it is for a local business, yes.
Great. Appreciate those people working with us, too. Any questions of Drew on that? On five, excuse me, on four or five? Let's have a vote, or actually, comments on number four. Seeing none, debate. Roll call, please.
Lubert.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to 2012-5, we have third reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Modern Lithoprint Company Project, Series 2012, in a principal amount not to exceed $4 million, to pay the costs of a project for Modern Lithoprint Company, a Missouri corporation that will include the acquisition and installation of an offset press at the existing facility located in the city, authorizing and approving certain documents, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Anything to add there, Drew?
No.
All right, any comments or debate from the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is 2012-6. Third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri eliminating the property tax levied for the fireman's pension fund, currently .0961, approximately 17% of the city's total property tax, and authorizing in lieu thereof a Jefferson City Fire Department Improvement Sales Tax at the rate of 1/4 of 1%, the collection and use thereof, for improvement of the Jefferson City Fire Department and providing for the submission of this ordinance to the qualified voters of said city for their approval at the election to be held on August 7, 2012.
Thank you, clerk. Okay, moving on. Drew, could you tell us more, please?
Sure. And what this bill does is propose, would propose to the voters a sales tax of one quarter, and it would roll back the fireman's pension property tax, which is 17% of the city's tax. The election would be in August. Councilman Mahalovich has an amendment or substitute that would amend the ordinance to create a fire department improvement plan performance. It would create an ad hoc board to determine what are defined as the key indicators, essentially to determine how we, how we can, some criteria to determine success of the fire tax. Those criteria would be submitted to public safety for approval and would require the fire chief to report each year on the success thus far. So I think the next thing to do, if Councilman Mahalovich wants to make the...
Rick, if you want to do, Councilman Rick, go ahead.
I guess I'd move that we include this substitute.
Okay, it's been moved that we include what we'll call is the Mahalovich substitute for now. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Larry Henry. Now we'll have discussion on exactly what the substitute does, Drew.
Would you like me to further? Again, what it does, it creates an oversight board, an ad hoc oversight board. The board would establish a criteria and would be reported on each year.
Okay. Rick, do you have a comment, please?
I hope that this, if this bill passes, it would add more control to the city council with regard to seeing that the fire improvement plan is doing what it is touted to do. Furthermore, I think it gives more accountability to our citizens in with regard to the expenditure of these funds and that we are making improvements as advertised.
Okay. Any other questions of staff at this time on the amendment? No other questions, we'll go into, we'll go into comments. Dr. Pope.
I would ask Jason to distribute the material that we had sent out earlier as an email. And this is the backup material that was not available on Thursday because we didn't know about this amendment until Friday. The purpose of this is to add a metric, since there is going to be this ad hoc committee assessing the effectiveness, it seemed appropriate that an additional category be added, Category 7, which you can add to your material from Thursday about future firefighter staffing. And my reason, and Jason can explain this additionally, my reason for making sure that this was a companion category to this amendment to make it complete, so that when these assessments are made on an annual basis, in the years once this additional station must be built, if funds would be utilized for manning, there's going to have to be some consideration in the first six categories. So by naming this category, making it part of the record, this assessment in these out years, when there are additional staffing requirements, that some future council might require additional funding, that it not be used against their successes on these other six categories. So this Category 7 has been added as a companion to this now introduced amendment, substitute, I should say.
I have a question of Jason, Jason or chief, I don't care which one answers this. On Category 7 here, I noticed that it's got staffing shown at, for 2021, starting in 2021. If for some reason Station 6 or another station was a priority by then or before then, how would that work?
As Dr. Pope said, I think it gives the luxury to the council to appropriate that and do that as they see fit. So if that comes in '16 or '17, it's up to the council's discretion, gives you control to do that. If I interpreted Dr. Pope's discussion earlier today correct?
Right.
Okay. At this point in time, any other questions on the amendment? Does any council member need more time to look at the materials handed out as part of the amendment? Councilman Bray.
I wouldn't mind just a few minutes to look this over.
At this point in time, we would entertain a five-minute recess.
So move.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we recess for five minutes. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We will reconvene by my watch in five minutes.